Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We will get started with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Orhan Osman is the Executive Director of the Rain Drop Turkish House. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman McAtee to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Oh God, we opened this session of praise in the name of God, the most merciful, the most kind, all compassionate, all-knowing, pre-eternally existent, ever enduring, most generous, oh Lord of lords, oh answerer of prayer, oh preserver of good deeds, oh most merciful to those needy of mercy. Our city leaders gathered together here this morning to find out how to serve better to beautiful people of Oklahoma City. Oh God, please make this meeting such a fruitful that everyone in the city gets benefit out of it. Oh God, thank you for blessing our city with many things that beautiful people of Oklahoma City appreciate it very much. Our Mayor Corvett informed us that urban institutes ranked our city number one as economic security, whereas many cities in the state does poorly. Also, you blessed our city far different than other cities around the world with our investment, infrastructure, arts and sports community, and the culture of entrepreneurship and diversity. Oh God, you are the one who blessed all this to our city. Please don't let us as a community go astray so we keep receiving your blessings. We ask you, oh Lord, to bless our city as well as our state so both may continue to prosper and continue to be symbol of peace and tranquility for people of all ethnic and religious background. Oh Lord, put love, compassion, and mercy between us. Help us make peace among the members of our community. Unite us around high human values. Give us a dedication to goodness as we seek to restore our community to wholeness and life. Grant us patience and perseverance for this cause. Protect those law enforcement officers, firefighters, medical personnel, our mayor, city councils, who demonstrate the highest level of courage and dedication and who put their lives on the line of our safety, security, and service. Oh Lord, help us to hold fast all together to your path in these troubled times. Lord, you have promised to help us in our time of difficulty and need. We rest upon your word. Our Lord, we believe therefore forgive us and have mercy on us, for thou art best of all who show mercy. Adorn us, oh Lord, with the most excellent robes of guidance and righteousness and ennoble us in the defense of virtuous values of this land. Plant through your tremendous grace the springs of humility in the watering place of our hearts. Oh shelterer of every weak one, grant us the capacity of shelter each and every people in need. Oh creator of steadfast effort, give us the strength and motivation to build upon the noble efforts of those before us. Purify our intentions, oh Lord, and revive our hearts and communities so that we may be as one as strengthen the foundation of our state for the benefit of generations to come. Our Lord, protect this great nation. This nation in fact has been a refuge for all oppressed people, believers who exalt your name. They worship you in their churches, synagogues, mosques, and holy buildings. Unite these people. Let them shed their differences and come together under your love and the love of humanity to move beyond hatred and bring good where others brought destruction. You are able to do all things. Amen.
Place the flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Every month, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club helps us honor one employee in the city of Oklahoma City who has done outstanding work and gets mentioned as our Employee of the Month. And a very familiar face and name to those of us here at City Hall, Wayne Corvell of the MAPS Office is our winner today. Wayne, come on up. If you can imagine being a construction manager in this time in Oklahoma City's history, you have an idea of what Wayne's job is like. Let's read the resolution and then we'll hear from Wayne and talk a little bit more about MAPS.
Well, as Wayne Corvell has been a city employee for 22 years and is the construction manager, engineering projects manager, in the MAPS Office of the City Managers Department. Whereas Wayne Corvell oversees the MAPS Office, construction project managers, and the MBA practice facility project, and often spends more than 50 hours per week keeping up with all the MAPS programs and the facilities progress. Whereas Wayne Corvell negotiates engineering contracts for MAPS III projects and reviews and approves payment and claims for construction and architectural services. And whereas Wayne is the lead staff member for the MAPS III subcommittees, he attends all the meetings, introduces agenda items, provides information, and responds to committee member questions. And in the absence of the MAPS project manager, also attends the MAPS III Citizens Advisory Board meetings. Whereas Wayne Corvell oversees a staff of over 20 employees and took on additional duties when the OC MAPS business manager passed away. Whereas Wayne Corvell is dedicated to the MAPS Office, is always willing to do what is needed to get the job done, has a positive attitude, and never complains about the time required to do his job. This council desires to recognize Wayne Corvell for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Wayne Corvell, February 2012, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation and congratulations to Wayne. Thank you, really great. Of course, now you know, we have to go through the process of seeing if this resolution passes. Can I have a motion? And a second? All right, cast your votes. How about that? All green lights. Wayne, congratulations and thanks for all your dedication. What can you tell the citizens? Is all this construction really going to end someday?
Well, it will end someday. MAPS III is going well. We're progressing a lot of projects as we go into the next quarter of the year, and I think that's the desire of the council, and that's what we're proceeding with. We have a great staff in our office, and this award doesn't come without all their hard work alongside me, so I really appreciate their efforts.
I appreciate you spreading the credit around. Thanks very much, your credit to the city. Let's show our appreciation to Wayne again.
Mayor, I just have to say that I first met Wayne in my previous life as a fire chief, and he was handling some of our construction projects. I was always happy to see Wayne would be the construction manager on him because he was always very level-headed and calm, and when I would get upset about something, he'd explain it very precisely to me why we couldn't do what it was I wanted to do, or we could, one or the other. But he's always done a great job, and I think the way you see some of the city projects going now are testament to what Wayne has done over the years and continues to do. So, appreciate it, Wayne. Thank you.
Mayor, Wayne not only draws some of the more difficult projects, often a lot of the high-profile projects. He was involved, going back to the original MAPS days on the Cox Center when that was reconstructed. He's involved in Bass Pro. The fairgrounds requested him to be involved in their projects. The Thunder requested him to be involved in the practice facility and the rain improvements. And of course, he's been involved in MAPS III projects. But Wayne has an opportunity. Sometimes these projects don't always go perfectly, and sometimes he has the opportunity to come over to my office to discuss how these projects are progressing. And he's always professional, has his facts down, and we always work through whatever issues are out there in a very professional and amenable process. And I just really appreciate Wayne and the professionalism that he brings to the difficult projects that he has. He doesn't draw fire stations anymore, Councilman Morris. He gets the more difficult projects.
We appreciate you, Wayne. All right, we're on item three of the council agenda. Item three B through E are a series of appointments. I'll ask for a motion.
Move the motion. Second.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item four is Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for both January 24th and the 31st. And item four B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 17.
Move the item.
We have a motion in a second. On item four, any comments or questions about the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have a number this morning. Starting on page five on the consent docket, item six I-1, six I-1, ABC, seven forty-six, the applicant has requested that this item be stricken. The applicant is going to resubmit this case as an S-P-U-D for consideration by the complain commission. Item six I-6 on page five again, P-U-D fourteen fifty, six I-6, the applicant has requested that this item be stricken. The application will be introduced on the February 21st meeting. Item eight B-1 on page fifteen, page fifteen, I'm sorry, eight B-1 at CE eight sixteen, the applicant has requested that this item be deferred until the February 21st meeting. Councilman Shadid's been working with the neighbors and the applicant on that issue. Moving to page seventeen, under eight G-1, B fourteen oh eight, East Euclid, whereas that be stricken, the owner has removed. And then on under secured items, also on page seventeen, under eight I-1, A twenty-seven twelve Brock Drive, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item B fourteen oh eight, East Euclid Street, the owner has secured. Item C fifteen, I'm sorry, fourteen fifteen, East Euclid, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item G nineteen seventeen, North Page, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item I sixteen thirty-four, Northwest Third Street, whereas that be stricken, there's now a new owner. Item L fifteen nineteen, Northwest Eleventh, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Moving to page eighteen, item N twenty-two fifty-nine, Northeast Fourteenth, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item O thirteen thirty-two, Northeast Sixteenth, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item P fifteen oh eight, Northeast Sixteenth, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item Y one hundred, Southeast Twenty-third Street, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item Z four twenty, Southeast Twenty-sixth Street, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item double E twenty-six twelve, Northeast Thirty-ninth Street, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. And double G, two thirty, Southeast Forty-ninth Street, whereas that be stricken, again, the owner has secured. So when we do send out the letters, we do get action. On to page nineteen, under items for denial, claims for denial, item eight L one A, eight L one A, Linda Atwood, who asked that claim be deferred until February 21st at the request of the applicant, or the claimant. And on the same page, claims for denial, item eight L one C, Gay Griffin Trust, we asked that that also be deferred until February 21st. And that's all.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll assess the council meeting convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. All right, we have a motion and a second. Four items listed. Any comments or questions on the MFA?
Just a question. A lot of these are having to do with working in comp claims. And do we periodically review our costs associated with being self-insured on working in comp, to make sure we're still?
Yes, we do. I'm not sure of the period that we do that, Mr. Ryan. I'll get some information back to you on how, as we evaluate that.
Okay. And it'd be interesting also, if you get the information back, if we could get a feel for what our administrative costs are. For instance, we list on these MFA projects, the cost of the award, what we have to pay an award, but we don't include our doctor's examination, what our attorneys are charging, plus the administrative costs of just handling paperwork. And that I think would be interesting to see how, what that number is.
Sure, I'd be happy to get some information back on that.
All right, ready to vote the MFA? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
I believe it's done to be conveyed with the.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions about the consent docket?
There are just a few minor questions.
Okay.
On A point one.
A one one?
A one.
Sure. Oh, A one, okay.
And then S one, and then on AP two.
A N, I'm sorry, and AP. All right, Pat, you want to get us started with A one?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a project to buy a couple of pieces of equipment, and it has a price for the two items of eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. But later on in the explanation, it talks about a price of each unit being fifty-four thousand dollars, and it talks about that some other departments might want to take advantage of this pricing. And if they could, I wonder if we could get it to the pricing that was quoted for the two units instead of what they go here as a unit cost.
We'd be happy to do that.
The other question on S point one is, just out of curiosity, we have a change order that adds Swiss Pearl. I wonder what Swiss Pearl was? It's sounding pretty exotic.
That's the material, the core that we've been consistently using through the myriad gardens project. It's a, Eric, what is Swiss Pearl?
That's what I thought, too.
These are some decorator-type panels that are around the ice rink, they're around some of the other areas that are in the pedestrian traffic areas. What's included on this change order is a replacement from some of those that were damaged caused by use just from pedestrians. And then the kick plates that you also see on these will help further protect those in the future. But this is a decorator panel. You can find them around the new ice rink and the new restaurant.
I'm just curious, what's Pearl on? And on AP two, this is a MAPS project and has to do with sidewalks. And I may have missed this in a previous meeting, but do we have a feel, as the council seen a map that shows where those sidewalks are supposed to be?
Question one more time, I'm sorry.
Where are the sidewalks going to be?
So this contract actually has two parts. The first part's going to be master planning those sidewalks. Second part will be designing those first sidewalks for MAPS III. So this contract will help decide those locations.
Because when we did MAPS III, when we did the initial election and vote, there was a map that showed sidewalks that were going to be included. Is that map providing any guidance to the?
It is, and there's some other citizen requests that we've received through the community meetings and through some of the subcommittee meetings and council requests, and all that's being provided to the engineer for consideration.
And he's going to boil those together and then come up with the plan?
That's correct.
And before his approval, does City Council have a chance to look at those sidewalk locations?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that was my question also. This is five percent of all the money that we have for sidewalks. We had something of a rough plan for the 2007 bond sidewalks, correct?
So all streets that are widened will at least have sidewalks on one side of the street. So that's also some of the additional information that's taken into account so that we don't have duplication of sidewalks in areas across the city.
How much of this is to develop the master plan and how much is for engineering of the sidewalks?
I don't have that specific breakdown, but generally what we're planning to do is the master planning in the first third of the project. So about the plenary report, which we would do on a normal typical project, we would have that master plan complete. If we're in agreement with that from a council's perspective, we'd then authorize them to do the final plans to do that first phase of sidewalk. But within the first third of the project, the master planning would be complete.
About how much of the half million dollars, I know you don't know the exact, roughly, is to develop a master plan, and how much is for engineering?
Let me look at the contract. I can get that back to you. There's specific amounts in the contract. I just don't have that with me today, and I'll respond. I believe it's in that, it's probably in that, I don't want to guess. Let me get the answer to you.
Do you think we could develop a master plan in-house? Do you think we need?
You know, I think what we found through the subcommittee meetings is that it was very challenging with all the information that was being received. A lot of citizen requests, council requests, there was a lot of work that was done by the planning department, talking about transit routes, and we also started talking a little bit about what they called desire lines, being able to survey in the city those areas where you see traffic occurring, but there's no sidewalk, there's a worn path on a particular street. We want to make sure that this engineer goes out and does that due diligence in looking at the rest of the city, not just the requests that we've received, and come up with a recommendation that we can bring before the council.
Yeah, Larry?
Eric, and was it not one of the design parameters of the sidewalks to make sure that the sidewalks would connect public buildings like schools and other facilities like that?
I think what you'll find in the council's intent, and there was a resolution that was passed, they're using that as a guide, and yes, it is arterial streets that make connections to public facilities.
I think the question, my question, Councilman Shadid's question, perhaps at least Councilman Ryan's question, has to do with the fact that a half million dollars on a ten million dollar contract is a huge amount of money. I mean, that's five percent, as was referred to as the total cost of the sidewalks. Is, are there other, are there going to be other administrative overhead expenses that are going to subtract from that after this? Are we going to have engineering after that? Or are they going to be engineered in-house?
The contract includes engineering by the engineer, not in-house. So in-house, we plan to provide them with all the information that's been collected over the past year to have them then put it into a compiled report with recommendations. We're looking at design in addition to this. This isn't just master planning.
So five percent soft costs is?
It's pretty low.
Low side of, 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 of course, and the region is low side because of sidewalks, it isn't, it isn't the intricate design of a building or something along those lines.
You know, I just, when I, when I look at the need for sidewalks and I think about spending half a million dollars on outside contract, we could hire a couple of guys on the inside. I just don't think this is rock, figuring out where these sidewalks are going to go is half a million dollar project. It just doesn't seem to me that it is.
It's more than that, and if I could comment one other, you know, sidewalks of yesterday were simply just, you know, forty-eight inch wide concrete panels that were laid from point A to point B. Today, they're very different. We have to meet stringent ADA requirements. We actually have to survey now sites for sidewalks just to make sure that we make those connections and that they meet all of the regulations. And so it's much more complicated. I would say that a sidewalk design isn't as complicated as a street, but it approaches a street design versus just something that we draw a line on the ground and have a contractor go build. And so we need the engineering for that, and it's really outside of in-house capabilities. We just don't have the city staff available to do that. The surveying and the design and the engineering that go with the sidewalk today.
And construction administration services that are done throughout the construction of the project.
I guess one concern I have, I'm looking at, to develop the master plan is a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
You, you are not going to be able to scratch the surface of what is needed in the master plan. So we're spending money developing a master plan on sidewalks that we're not going to get to. We went forty years in the city, we didn't build any sidewalks. So there's, we're so far behind, there's such demand. I feel like in Ward Two, you could just throw darts on the wall and you'd hit good targets. I mean, I can tell you right now where great targets would be if you just targeted transit stops and schools where the kids are walking down the street. I feel like, I just don't feel like we need to spend a hundred and forty-eight thousand to tell me where good targets would be in Ward Two. I can tell you that right now. And you're going to, developing a master plan is for, you know, years and decades of projects in the future. I'm not sure that that's what the intent of spending MAPS three dollars now was.
You know, I think from a city staff perspective, we're challenged to bring to you the information that's geographically distributed across the city, and it has some level of criteria as to why certain sidewalks were selected over others. And we simply need the assistance of a consultant to help us do that. We thank Smith Roberts for going through the selection process was the best choice, and that's why we're recommending that to you today. I think on a ten million dollar project, I believe the hundred and fifty thousand to be money well spent just to make sure that we're doing it right and that we've considered all the options. But I'd be happy to receive any comments, and I could take questions. I mean, I, we would like to proceed with this. We think this is a necessary service.
But each one of the council members, in reference to their ward, and as stated by two other council, you know, some of us have a very well knowledge of areas in our ward that have some very challenging issues as it relates to walking. And especially when you look at the density of children in some of the, some of the neighborhoods. Are we going to have an opportunity to identify some of those areas based upon complaints that we've received from our constituents as it relates to why we can't get sidewalks? And one in particular is, I remember several months ago, we had this big challenge in northeast Oklahoma City at Twenty-third and MLK. And three people were, two people were killed in, as a result of trying to maneuver across Twenty-third Street on the north side, and because of a gap in reference to a sidewalk, the lady tipped over in one of the wheelchairs. And the, and the, the, the man had been going on for quite some time in some other parts of the area. That we know. You know, I went out, I talked to the citizens in the area, I talked to the people who lived in the senior citizens homes, and they talked, explained to me the challenges they have on a day-to-day basis in reference to maneuvering from the place where they reside to the grocery store, to the, to the drugstore. And so those are areas where the council people have a one-on-one knowledge of the gaps and the lack of sidewalks in those areas. And I'm just concerned that when you put one person in charge of the whole city of Oklahoma City in reference to a master plan identification of sidewalks, some of us are going to get left out. And my concern is, is that, you know, are we going to be able to have some input in reference to this whole diagram as it relates to where these sidewalks are going to go? And I know that there's not enough money to do sidewalks for everybody's liking desire, but at the same time, I think that this is going to create just another, you know, gap in reference to those individuals who have a one-on-one knowledge of the conditions that exist in their community and in their, in their various wards.
Councilman, I'll promise you, I will promise you that each councilman will be interviewed as to what your passion desires as we go forward. But ten million dollars is not adequate to do all the sidewalks needed in Oklahoma City area. We could probably spend ten million dollars in each ward and probably not have much problems in doing so. And I think this discussion this morning is probably illustrative of why we need a consultant to help come in, develop criteria, interview us each, and decide where those needs are, to make sure that we do have a fair and equitable distribution of those dollars across the city. But I promise you that we will have interviews one-on-one with each councilman that comes forward.
Your Honor, I ask a question. It doesn't relate specifically to MAPS sidewalks, but it does something Eric said, and that is our policy of installing a sidewalk on one side of a four, of a street improvement project. And that's, I understand the economics behind that, but it seems like in a lot of instances, that sidewalk on one side of a four-lane street that's designed to carry lots of traffic is not as much value to pedestrians as a sidewalk on our sidewalk. And I wish as we go forward, for these things, we might have a review of that policy in terms of what we really have as our objective, and that is to make Oklahoma City a more walkable community. Because in a lot of areas where we do this, we have a mix of commercial and residential areas, and with the sidewalk on one side, it's a barrier to, for citizens who live close to these doors to walk the doors. Just as we go forward, I'd like to keep that policy reviewed.
We'd be happy to do that, and I think that's a really good idea to do so. But remember where we came from. We went through decades and decades of not putting sidewalks in in Oklahoma City. It was a choice-made policy decision of previous councils. Subsequently, we now require them in subdivisions and divisions that they go in. In our last '07 bond issue, we've made the decision to put them in on our trailer streets as we reconstruct those, and in neighborhoods as we go through and reconstruct. as we reconstruct those and in neighborhoods as we go through and reconstruct them. And then we made it also a project in the MAPS Three associated with new trail systems. So we made a significant step in, in positive progress on this the last few years. Do we have a lot further to go? Yes, we do, but we've done some pretty good steps. And yeah, yes, Councilman Ryan, I do believe we should go review that policy.
I think we're making good progress.
And when we do with the next bond issue, maybe, maybe we sever it even further, up, even further at that point.
I didn't mean to sound critical of what we were doing. However, I felt that, I, I think we need to review that policy because if our overall objective is walkability, we need to see whether that really contributes significantly to the walkability aspect of our citizens' lives, that's all. I think we've done, we've made a start, but I understand installing sidewalks in existing areas is an expensive proposition. The piece of Ward Eight that I'm particularly interested in crosses the two drainage facilities, commercial driveways, it would be an expensive project to put in, but I think it would be a valuable project to put in. Any rate.
Eric, how long do you think it'll take to develop a master plan?
You know, I, I think it's just going to be dependent on the, on the level of questions that we receive. Obviously, the subcommittee on MAPS Three is extremely involved. Georgie Rasko has been a proponent of this, and she's also done some independent research. And so we've actually got a lot of data to collect, including the subcommittee, so maybe 90 days, 90 to 120 days.
We look forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
I'm just going to make a comment that, having sit in on the, on the subcommittee meetings, we're almost making our point better than Eric can here because that committee brings forward their own ideas of where sidewalks ought to be. And in fact, they brought in a map that covered the whole room almost, where they got input from all the neighborhoods with neighborhood alliance on where they think the sidewalks ought to go. And then you've got school systems that have their input on where they think sidewalks ought to help their, their schools and everything else. So I think to make some sense of all of this stuff coming together on where you need sidewalks is exactly why we need to do what we're doing today. Because if everybody has their own idea, just as the, as the eight, nine of us do, 10 times that many people out there have their own ideas about where sidewalks need to be, so I think this is a good idea.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
On AN, on purchase of the, the site for the intermodal transportation, this is from the Oklahoma City Capital Improvement Sales Tax Funds?
This is from MAPS Three.
Okay, that's, okay. That's what I wanted to confirm.
Ready to vote on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On the concurrence docket, just two items today. There was second on the concurrence?
Second.
All right, any other comments or questions on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Seven. The address is 818 Northeast Eighth Street. It's currently a planned unit development, it would be a simplified planned unit development. Skip.
Well, I have no, absolutely no problems with this. This is the concept for the OK Kids Correl Development that will provide a place for lodging and for parents of children with cancer, and the development is at 18 Northeast Eighth Street, directly east of the OU Health Science Center, and it's part of the Toby Keith Foundation, and staff has approved this, the Planning Commission approved it, I approve it wholeheartedly, and I think there is one, one condition in reference to a retention, or is it a easement? Is that right?
They've submitted the easement.
They've submitted the easement, okay. I recommend that we, we approve this.
All right, we have a motion, a second. We're voting on item 8A1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward Three. The address is 6201 Shiloh Boulevard. It's a planned unit development currently and will become a simplified planned unit development. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the applicant is represented here, if he'd come forward, and I think he has just a couple of pictures, I think it would be very informative for us to see.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Mr. Doug Dennison, who's the owner of the company, and Mark Grubbs, who's the engineer on this project. What we've, what we're asking for is approval of SPUD 646. Currently, the site is zoned in PUD 1135, which has a base of C1 zoning, which wouldn't allow our use. So what we did was, we came in with a new SPUD and we limited it to a single-use construction, sales, and service. What Mr. Dennison has done is created his office to look like a residential building to match a surrounding area. So he took great care to make sure that it was an attractive building and it matched some of the close residential uses. As I said, it's a single-use and it's construction, sales, and services. Now, all equipment that Mr. Dennison and his company have will be stored inside in the garages, there will never be any outside storage. Planning Commission has recommended approval and we seek your approval. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, David. I'm in favor of this. Does the council have any questions? There are no protesters involved? I'd like to move for approval.
All right, let's cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
On item 8B, that item will be deferred for two weeks. The new date is February 21st. That's item 8B1, deferred for two weeks. Item 8B2 is a zoning case in Ward Eight. We'll be closing a utility easement west of North Penn. Pat, you okay with this?
Yes, sir, this is an old, uh, plating, uh, that we had.
And I, and I see now that there's been a request to defer this item indefinitely.
Yeah, I wasn't familiar with that request.
It's, it's written on the agenda itself.
Okay.
So it looks like that item's been removed from today's consideration?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item 8C then. This is an issue in Ward Six, to close a portion of Northwest 12th Street, Northwest 13th Street, and North Walker. I understand Councilwoman Sawyer is okay with this. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under item 8C?
This is the closure of the alleys for the urban renewal project, The Edge, on the Old Mercy side.
Okay. It's like no one here wishing to comment. How about a motion going forward?
Move the alleys to second.
All right, we're voting on item 8C. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D is a public hearing, second time we've had an opportunity to review this issue. We had a presentation a while back. Comments or questions here on item 8D? All right, how about a motion to move it forward?
Right.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Same situation for item 8E, where you again have had a presentation, this is the second notice and it is a public hearing. Any comments or questions today on item 8E? All right, cast your votes. And it moves on to the process. Item 8F is an ordinance to be introduced, and I believe Chief City is here to help guide us through the preliminary aspects of this problem.
As you, if you remember when we came before council the first time, there was two main areas we were trying to address with the changes in the taxicab ordinances, with the parking ordinances. One is, is trying to keep a lot of the cabs off the meters and sitting at the meters, trying to pick up fares, taking up parking space for people that come and do business in the downtown area. One of the other, one of the other issues was having enough spaces in the Bricktown area. Late at night, after hours, when clubs closed, there was really no place for taxicabs to park, to pick up fares when fares are probably most needed, when people are coming out of the clubs, and we would prefer them to, to take a taxi rather than drive. What the, what the ordinance has, has done, the changes in the ordinance, basically in Chapter 32, it added language that actually allows the impoundment of vehicles, of anybody's vehicle that may be parked in a taxicab stand, in loading zones, other areas too, but that also includes a taxicab stand, so we can keep those freed up for taxicabs. So that language was added. It also changes and removes, because it was an issue, I, I think, with, with Councilman Kelly about the fines and the 10, the 10-day period and being able to pay those fines, it actually will extend that out to probably about 15 days. So that 10 days has been taken out, it will be just set on the ticket, it's when the arraignment date is, it's when the fine has to be paid. Right now, you're looking at about 15 days, and it, and it could be longer, but it's, it'll, it'll, it changes that. It also moves from Chapter 32, the language that prohibits cabs from parking in any other parking spaces other than designating taxicab stands. It, it takes it out of Chapter 32 and moves it to Chap, to Chapter 56, where the language basically states the same with the addition that they shall not park at any parking meter within Bricktown and downtown. So now it's, it basically states that a taxicab cannot park at any time at any place other than a designated taxi stand in downtown. Now, that doesn't prohibit them from picking up fares, from picking up fares, stopping temporarily, dropping people off, picking up fares in different areas. They just can't park and wait to do business in any other area than those designated parking It also adds in Chapter 50, in Chapter 56, it adds that the carriage stands that we now have in Bricktown, and there's four areas, will be converted at 12:30 a.m. over to taxicabs. Taxicabs will be, will be able to park in those designated areas now for carriages. Carriages do not function during that time of night. If they do, it's for special events and, and they're not really needed. So at 12:30 to 3:00 now, at those times that the bars let out, the clubs let out downtown, we have quite a few additional spaces for taxicabs to park in those carriage areas. And all those carriage areas are located near a lot of those clubs that, that was, that was the concern at the time. What it, what it, what we also did is we increased the number of taxicab stands in the, in the downtown area from, actually added 10 spaces in the downtown area. We actually added two different cab stand spaces in the Bricktown area. So that makes a total of 12. That doubles the number of taxicab stands that we had before. We had 12 before, we now have 24 total. That does not include after 12:30 at night, the additional spaces available to them at, at the carriage locations. So that's basically in a nutshell what it, what it does, and I'll entertain any questions.
Okay. Comments or questions for the chief?
Chief, what's the, as far as the carriages, are there, what's the most violation that could occur in reference to one of the carriages parking someplace else?
The carriage parking?
Are they subjected to the same citations as the taxicab?
If they, yeah, they have designated, they have designated areas to park, which is their carriage stands that they're required to park in to actually wait and pick up fares. Now, they can again stop and drop people off, as can the taxicabs, but they do have those designated areas where they can actually sit and wait for fares like a taxicab can.
So, so the provision in the, in the ordinance states that vehicle operators violating this ordinance will be subject to a $50 fine and could have their vehicles impounded. What would, what would rise to the level that the vehicle would be impounded?
If they're parked, if somebody, somebody is going to an event and decides to park in either a carriage, carriage, restricted carriage stand area, or they park in a, a restricted taxicab area, or if somebody's going to, you know, a game or something like that and they park in one of those spaces that's, that needs to be available for the taxicabs, then that, it can be impounded and remove that vehicle. Where before, we could just write a citation. And that's necessary to keep those, that, those, those spaces open for the, for the taxicabs and the carriages to do business, because that's what it's designated for.
Well, could the taxicabs be impounded for the same violation on the flip side of that?
No, they would be cited if they're parked at a meter. Their, their violation would be parked in an area other than the taxicabs. Now, if they're parked in a carriage area where they're not designated prior to 12:30, yes, they could be subject to that, to impoundment. But, but it does not, what we would end up doing is writing a citation if they're parked at a meter. If they're, if they're parked at a meter to pick up fares, or they're parked at a meter and leave their cab, then they would be cited, they would get it, they would get a citation.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this item that's being introduced today? Yes, David?
Yes, Mayor. Chief, may I ask this, and this shows my not being aware of the situation, but do the carriages continue as late as 12:30? I'm just wondering if, if that area could be moved up to say 11:30 p.m. that the taxis could be?
I believe they, they usually, they, they work up to 12:30 in many cases. It's not typically much past that.
Okay, I'm just trying to look out for these independent cab drivers, really. With respect to the ability to impound vehicles that are parked in the taxi areas or the carriage areas, can we put signs out there that says vehicles would be subject to impounding?
Has, I think it has to be, is that correct? That they have, it has to be posted, Cindy, I believe? We can look at that if it's not, to make sure that it's clearly posted.
I just think that might help to make sure that non-appropriate vehicles would stay away from that area. Finally, is, I guess it's a problem more so in Bricktown, I'm just wondering if you could provide an exemption for cabs to park in areas outside of the designated traffic cab area, say after midnight? I mean, do you still have parking problems occurring that late at night as far as meters?
Well, I, you'll have people parked in the meters that are, are, the clubs let out at 2:00, they close at 2:00. And that's where you have your biggest problem, is you have that influx of people. But those people, people will park in all the meter spaces until 2:00.
I see.
They'll get all that space, take up all that space, so it's really probably not going to be much of an option. You know, we've made additional spaces where available in Bricktown for the cabs to increase that. And the cabs really, it's not a significant an issue for the cabs until those clubs start closing, and that's when they, that's when they're down there. And before, they would just circle the area, and one of the complaints we had was that they didn't have a place to stop and wait for cab fares.
Right.
And so this allows them to be able to stop, people will be aware of where they are because they'll be in close proximity to the clubs, and they'll be there when, when they feel like the fares will, will, they'll be needed.
Okay. Finally, do you know, or does anyone know, do the taxicab drivers have like an association that we as a city could work with if there's problems like, apparently there is one with respect to them parking in meters?
Right, I think we work pretty closely with the taxicab companies. For example, with this, we made sure that all the companies were aware of what the ordinance was, allowed them to have input, and to the ordinances, any objections and things like that. Like I said, one of the issues with, with converting the carriages was a result of our discussions with the cab companies. I don't know how many cab companies you have now, what, you have maybe five?
Five or six.
Five or six major ones that we, and plus, we also, our permits and ID also constantly discuss the issues with them, and I'm not sure if they have an association or not, but they're sure, we certainly make sure that, that they're involved.
Well, the reason why I ask is I, I would prefer if this organization or association could begin to self-regulate, you know, and we could address problems like there's too many cabs parking at these meters, and they take it upon themselves to say, okay, we're not going to do that anymore. But apparently, that's not the case, and so.
They're very competitive. They're very competitive.
Yeah, so they don't work as well together. Okay, well, maybe this is the only recourse we have, is to, okay, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Item being introduced today, any other comments or questions?
We need a motion.
We need a motion. All right, cast your votes. Item is introduced, item passed unanimously. All right, on item 8G, it's a list of dilapidated structures. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G?
The blue.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structure in the Historic Preservation District. This one happens to be in Ward Two. Ed, you okay with this one?
Yes.
All right. Any comments or questions on item 8H1A? Has anyone shown up to speak on this item? All right, how about a second? Cast your votes. Item passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8I?
The blue.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J, I understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes.
All right. How about a motion then? Cast your votes. Item moves into executive session. Item 8K, I understand we do need executive session?
That's correct.
How about a motion to move that item into executive session?
The yellow.
Cast your votes. Item is moved to executive session. Item 8L, this claim is recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8L? Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight L? All right, how about a motion?
We have.
Oh, please, sir, come forward. I didn't see your hand.
I apologize. Fifty-two years, this, I have to confess, is my first city council meeting.
Well, welcome, welcome to the, to the show.
Yeah.
Which project are you wishing to speak on?
It's, my name is Felix McDougall, so item E.
Okay.
And first of all, I guess I just appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about the situation. As I said, my name is Felix McDougall. With me today is, is my daughter Mallory St. Aubin, who was actually in the incident, her husband, Austin St. Aubin, and then Blake and Ally, who were actually in the vehicle with her during the accident. They were there firsthand, so I know any of them would probably be happy to, to speak to you as well, but since the car belongs to me or is owned officially by me, I'm the one that is required to make the claim.
Okay.
If, if, if you will, I would like to, and I know there's been a recommendation for denial, but if, if you would bear with me, I would like to walk through my understanding of, of what took place. If you could, if you could imagine driving down the, driving down the highway, my daughter and her two coworkers on the way to work are moving down the highway when they see a police car. And I don't know if the police officer is in the room or his supervisor is in the room today. It doesn't look like it, but first of all, I have a huge respect for the police department, anybody who serves. I've got family members who serve there and in fire department and military, and I have huge respect for the fact that they put their lives in harm's way for us. On this particular day, this police car was approaching my daughter's vehicle at a rate of speed without lights on that was enough to at least startle or alert her to, I need to get out of the lane, I need to get out of the way. In her attempt to do that, she starts moving to the right. And one of the things the police report says as she moves, she moves out of the lane, moves to the other lane, well, she did start, she did begin to move to the other lane, but she never left her lane. When she started moving to the right, she noticed that there was a car to her right in a blind spot, so she was actually not able to move into the other lane. So she started to move that way, couldn't then move back into her lane, at which time she looked into her rearview mirror and she saw the officer run into her left rear bumper. I don't know what to, I guess, to say about that other than she never left the lane. And I guess in, in my, in my days of dealing with insurance claims and so forth, I've never, and I have confessedly bumped into people from the rear end. I've never seen a situation where someone was rear-ended that the party that rear-ended them was not responsible. This is not a big claim. It's certainly, I mean, it's thirty-one hundred dollars was the average of the claim. There was no one hurt, thank God. It's a, it's a fairly heavy vehicle. If it had been something else, that, that might have been a different story. But fortunately, every, everyone is, is, is fine. But I guess what I would say is, you, you probably see, or you may see, situations where, where individual citizens try to take advantage of the council, of the city, of a situation. That is not the case in this situation. I do not think that there was anything that, that my daughter could do to avoid what happened in this situation. Things that I don't understand, or I don't know, is I, I don't know why the officer, because she was doing sixty-five miles an hour in a sixty-five speed limit. What I don't know is I don't know why he was going faster or needed to pass her and with, with no lights on. And maybe that's not a, a rule, I don't know. I know in some places it is. But I guess as I see it, the person that's behind has responsibility of being, having enough distance between them and the car to be able to slow down should there be a situation like this. So with this, you know, I, I would be happy to try and answer any questions, or certainly ask any of these guys that were there at the time. I know that just from talking to them, the officer supervisor came out to, I believe he's the one that actually did the report. And it's my understanding that, that the officer and the supervisor, the officer, shared with, with the, my daughter and the, and her two friends that they didn't need to worry, this wasn't their fault, this is, and that was their comment on the scene. So with that, I don't know what else to do other than just ask you guys.
Let us get some advice from our legal staff.
Okay.
What can you tell us about this?
Good morning, Amy Cohn, Municipal Counselor's Office. There was an accident on the highway, and if you'll pull up the pictures, scroll down a little bit, please. You can see the damage to the rear of the vehicle is on the very far left. The Oklahoma Traffic Collision Report, we have a, I have a picture of the diagram that was drawn for that as well, indicates that the claimant's daughter pulled into the middle lane for the most part, and at least, and then started pulling back into the outside lane, and that's when the officer was beginning to overtake on the outside lane. So when she came back in, that's when the point of collision was, when she entered the, the lane she had just left.
Okay. Comments or questions from council?
Does the police report speak to, does the police report speak to the car in the blind spot?
No.
So he doesn't acknowledge that it was or wasn't there either one, doesn't, just sign it on?
Well, it, it does mention that the driver said that there was a car in her blind spot. The cause of the accident was attributed to an improper lane change by the claimant's daughter.
What road are we talking about here?
This was on Broadway Extension near Wiltshire Boulevard.
Okay.
What, does the report indicate where the officer was going? Were they on a call, or?
No, it doesn't indicate where he was going.
Why was he using excessive speed?
It, it did say that it, the vehicle didn't have the lights and sirens on.
Did it indicate the speed of the either vehicle?
No.
Was the, was the driver of the vehicle, were they given a citation for any traffic infraction?
It's generally the policy not to, if it's a city-involved vehicle, they don't give a citation, no.
Amy, can we see the picture again?
Of the? Yeah.
Of the back of the vehicle there, yeah. So are, are we suggesting that the impact took place on the side of the vehicle or the back of the vehicle?
It looks like on the left rear, on the bumper.
Yeah. It looks that way to me, too. It looks to me like if this vehicle was struck from the rear.
Now, I, to me, it's a matter of, is, is there any reason to doubt her claim of the car in the blind spot? Because if it was there and she continued going into the center lane, you're going to have a collision there.
Right.
And I, I don't know if she, if, if she saw it and was trying to make sure she didn't collide with that car and came back in, I, I, I don't know. It seems like a fair claim to me, I'll just put it that way.
This is just a question of facts, and the council can determine the facts either in favor of the claimant or against the claimant. It's up to the council to determine the facts.
Well, if, if we're going to do that, I'd like to have the driver of the car come up and tell us whether there was a car in the blind, that where, there, there was a car in the blind spot. We need to have some evidence that if we're going to, if we're going to consider that.
Pull the microphone down for her, and we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
I am Mallory St. Aubin, and I live at seven eighteen Scott Drive in Edmond, so seven three zero one three. And what was the question?
The, the question had to do with your inability to change lanes.
Yes.
Why did you change lanes? Or why were you attempting to change a lane?
Originally, okay, I started to change lanes. I noticed that the police officer was coming from behind, he was in the same lane as I was, from behind, at a very high rate of speed. And I know that city vehicles are supposed to be given the right of way, so I wanted to move over. And I turned on my indicator, and I started to move when I noticed the front end of a white vehicle. I, I couldn't see a license plate or, or, an indicator to tell you the model, I guess, but it was a small white vehicle. And so I did not move into that lane. I, I went back into my lane to, my goal was to get back to the center.
How fast were you driving?
I was driving between sixty and sixty-five miles an hour.
You didn't, you didn't slow down?
I, I, I did.
I mean, I can understand that you didn't have time, I mean, it wasn't likely you had time to slow down, but you just attempted to move to the right, were unable to move back?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the claim. Okay? Comments or questions on the item?
It has been approved as a confession of judgment.
Yes.
In other words, the city clerk wants us to bring it back next week for a confession of judgment. We'll bring it back next week.
Okay.
But you don't have to be here.
You don't need to be here. Yeah, it'll be on for approval.
And we're talking about approving it for the average of the two, of the two, there are two pretty wide range, pretty wide range in them, and we're, we're.
Yes, sir.
Talking about paying the average.
Okay.
Is it the average, or is it the lower of the two?
What the claimant has alleged is the average of the two.
Okay.
They generally look at the lower.
Right.
We'll, we'll approve it for the average of the two.
All right.
So just.
So this item is going to be removed from the list of denial today, and it'll be brought back next week. You won't need to be here, and it'll be on Claims Recommended for Approval.
Okay, is there a next step for us?
No, we'll get in contact with you. Amy, approximately how long does it take to pay the claimant after it's approved next week?
Well, if everything were in our hands, it would be easier to estimate that, but generally about two to three weeks.
Okay.
Till the check comes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Francis, do we need a motion to remove this from the list of claims recommended for denial?
Yes, we do have a motion.
All right, so the, the motion is to strike item eight L one E from the list of claims recommended for denial. Cast your votes on that motion. That motion passed unanimously.
Now, we have a motion on the balance.
So we have a motion now to bring it back?
On the balance of the document.
Oh, I see. We have a motion and a second on the claims recommended for denial. Cast your votes, and those claims are denied. Well, on item nine now, these are claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item nine?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes. Those claims are approved. We want item ten. Item ten A is a resolution from council approving travel expenses from the National League of Cities, which takes place next month. Do you have a motion?
No.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. I have some counsel. Pat, you want to get us started?
No.
All right, skip.
I would just like to thank all the, the members of staff that participated in the town hall meeting for Ward Seven last Tuesday. Charles Locke, Eric Wagner, Kathy O'Connor, and Bob Daly. And I know, just calling the individual names and that you'll leave somebody out, but because I know that their whole staff participated in making their presentations, and for the community, it was well-received, and would just like to thank each and every one of you all that participated in preparing the, the, the slides and the presentations for the Ward Seven Community Town Hall Meeting, and it was a great success. Thank you.
David?
Just to mention that I had the pleasure yesterday of attending Hillcrest Elementary School's grand opening. They're one of the recipients of the Maps for Kids Fund, and the school looks great, and the kids showed a lot of enthusiasm, and, and it's just very heartwarming to see the money spent for such a good use. Thank you.
We have twenty-nine school projects under construction right now with Maps for Kids. All will be completed, all those twenty-nine will be completed this calendar year. Pete?
First, I want to comment on the Governor State of the State speech yesterday. I was very, very pleased at her comments with regard to smoking, and I think it opens the way to do exactly what we've been hoping could happen with regard to the control of smoking. I mean, it's such a gigantic health issue. Yesterday, she commented that they were banning smoking in all city-owned, all state-owned buildings and facilities, including vehicles. And I'd like for us to look into whether or not we have banned smoking inside vehicles because they're, they're city-owned property, and if we, I found most interesting, they had a smoking room in the Capitol, and she's closing the smoking room in the Capitol and turned it into a fitness center. They've, they've applied for funding, for a grant to turn it into a fitness center, and it's, the hospital association is going to match the grant if they're successful, and they're going to turn it into a fitness center, which I think really puts an exclamation point on the idea that, of what we need to do about smoking. So I, I very much appreciate her comments in that regard. Second is our new Maps Program Manager, David Todd, was selected last week as the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce Man of the Year, which is, he probably hadn't had enough time to be Maps Program Manager to tarnish his image in South Oklahoma City, but, but that was a well-deserved reward for a lot of years of service in South Oklahoma City. Lastly, the, it appears that the idea that the state is going to make a major step to require disclosure and to do something with regard to what I consider to be a, a serious ethics problem with regard to municipal elections, and I believe they will be willing to give the cities the authority to manage that themselves. That's kind of good news and bad news. The good news is there, we may be able to find a way to manage it ourselves. The bad news is there are many, many pitfalls, in my opinion, in forming our own ethics commission. And if, for instance, all the school boards want to do that, they'd have to form their own ethics commissions, and the, or any other entity, the, actually, I guess you could push it so far that the VOTEX would have to form their own ethics commission. But I think it warrants us looking into how we would do that. There might be a way to, to form an ethics commission that would be just, municipalities would be subject to, and maybe, maybe do it through ACOG. I, I don't, I don't know how to do it, but, but I don't think the idea that we form an ethics commission for just Oklahoma City is a good one, because I think the politics of doing that could certainly over, out, it would, potentially could outweigh the value of having a disclosure-based ethics system. Somebody's got to appoint the, the ethics commissioners, and that could become very political in communities where they've had their own ethics commission. That's become a very political, it's changed as the mayor changes sometimes the ethics commission, a change which kind of flies in the face of a disinterested ethics commission, it seems.
Do we need an ethics commission just to require reporting?
Perhaps we don't, and, and I, and I, but I would, I would like to, if, if, to prevail on the mayor, to, to appoint a small study group to just look at it for the next few months, and to try to come into something that would require disclosure.
Do we need to wait till the state's finished with their work in order that we don't?
Well, I'm not sure, I don't believe we do. Norman, for example, has their own ethics commission now.
We don't want an ethics commission. We want to change the rules.
No, but they, I mean, what I'm saying is, they have, they're managing their own disclosure through that vehicle. I think we could manage it. I think we could manage it through ordinance, is my point.
Does the ordinance, I mean, does the Norman Ethics Commission require, or have they had to?
It's a Norman election commission, not an ordinance.
Okay. Have they put in place a requirement that reporting goes beyond the candidates?
I'm not sure.
Okay. That's what makes me a little uneasy about not waiting till we know what the state will permit us to do. I hate to spend the time and effort coming up with a plan that is, you know, that is contrary to what the state would allow us to do.
I don't think they regulate us now. I think what we do now is our own by ordinance. Is that right? Isn't that right?
No, the state has the authority to look at our elections.
Yeah, my, my legal opinion is that the state has preempted the field. It's just like 3.2% beer. The state has occupied the field of disclosure on elections, state and local, county, municipal, and school districts, and they've occupied the field, as just like with 3.2% beer, where the state hasn't expressly said, you can't do anything. But in case law, the Supreme Court has said, the state has by implication, by entering this field and enacting these broad regulations, they have by implication preempted municipalities from enacting their own ordinances to regulate campaign finances. So I think you've got to have a state law for the city to be able to do it by ordinance.
So then I think that the idea I have that we wait until the state finishes their business might be helpful for us rather than go forward and suggest something that doesn't work in the state law. Maybe we need to devote our efforts right now to shaping, helping the legislature shape that law to allow us to do what we want to do.
Kenny, what has Norman done, in your opinion?
What they have done is they've attempted to make it, first, I don't think what they've done is legal. I think it's preempted by state law.
Okay.
Number two, they've attempted to make it look independent by having an election commission that looks at allegations of, say, violations and then reports that to the city attorney that there appears to be a violation and recommends some action. So that's all they've really done. They, they have an election commission that appears to make it independent of local control of the current people in charge in Norman. However, it's really not. I mean, I sent you guys an opinion a couple of weeks ago on this, and another issue you have is with the municipal counselor and also the municipal judges doing enforcement action on a city ordinance for disclosure requirements. We would be put in a position, it's really a conflict of interest for us to, say, prosecute incumbents on the council and also for the municipal judges to hear cases involving incumbents. You'd also have a perceived conflict of interest with us attempting to take enforcement action against challengers to incumbents. So that's some of the, that's kind of what Pete was alluding to when he was talking about, you know, putting it solely on a local level, that there needs to be some broader type of enforcement mechanism.
But I know, I, what Kenny says I agree with. The main thing that I don't like about the Norman situation is I think it would, even if it were constitutional or legal, it's not fair to put the enforcement of it back on the city attorney that we hired. I mean, the conflict of interest just, that just doesn't work. I mean, the idea that we're going to have those things decided by us, recommended by somebody we've appointed, it just smacks of, this is not going to work. So, but something's got to work. I mean, we can't just, in my view, we cannot just say it's too hard and put it in the circular file because it's too hard. What's happening is, and I think we're seeing it now, we got the first taste of it in Oklahoma. We got the first taste of it in Oklahoma City before it hit nationally. Now, you cannot turn on the news without seeing how many millions of dollars are being put in, in some cases by anonymous people and the kinds of, I just dread what's going to happen this, this next year, during this year, during the presidential campaign. I think that unlimited cap is going to make this the most, the ugliest election in history. I mean, and it, the Republican primary is already ugly. I'm thinking, no wonder it's difficult for people to make up their mind when 92% of the campaign ads in Florida were negative and of those, more than half of that came from those unlimited funds. Now, I understand I can't do anything about the unlimited funds, but at least we can make people put their name on it. And that, I don't want to not do it. And I agree with Pat to this extent that we may not be able to do anything, but we need to be ready to do something as soon as we possibly can. If there's a way that we can encourage a legislator-friendly to Oklahoma City to introduce an amendment to a current bill, it's too late to put a new one out, but the bills that are there could be amended. If we can draft legislation, then we ought to be doing that. We ought to be finding a way to do it, because we've got elections coming up next spring and we're going to be faced with the same thing again, unless the conversation that's gone on this horseshoe by some of us is enough to thwart the kind of activity that happened last time. And I think to some extent that works. I think to some extent, public officials saying, we don't like this, we don't want this, I think that helps. I think that that message goes out to people that are, that might be willing to put large sums of money in. But, you know, it's an old adage, I've been around, I personally have been around politics a long time, and it's an old adage about negative campaigning. When you're asked, when do you go negative? And if you're ahead, you go, if you're behind, you go negative, and if you're ahead, you go negative, and if you're, if the race is close and you can't figure it out, then you go negative. And all this stuff has to do with negative campaign. That's all it was. There wasn't a positive ad run, and they're not running positive ads with this money. And the reason they're not is because they don't have to put their name on it.
Well, I think it.
If you're going to throw garbage, if you have to be identified as the guy that's throwing the garbage, then you're much less likely to do it, and that's.
Pete, I think, I agree with you said earlier, though, our efforts right now ought to be directed towards the legislature.
I agree, I agree.
Rather than sitting around and writing a bunch of regulations that may or may not be legal after the legislature does their work.
Why don't we ask staff to look into what legislation might be introduced or about to be introduced that we can put our two cents into?
Okay. I think it's going to be important. We've got legislators that will help us, some of which were with, at the legislative breakfast that we had, those that attended, I appreciate their attendance, and those that didn't, I wish they'd have come. And in that, I'll shut up about it, except I want to tell you one thing. I want you to remember who was at, which legislators, legislators were at our meeting and how many of them represent part of my ward. And I will tell you that each one of those received a call from me or board or both. Each one of them received a personal handwritten note from me encouraging them to come. And I think next year, everybody ought to make a pledge to try to do that. It is so important that we have a better relationship with, and it's not a partisan thing. It's not a, if you look at the table I sat with, they're about half, probably the only two Democrats alive left, and the rest of them were Republicans, but they were all there together. We were all talking about city issues, and I think that's how, we all need to think about it, because I think we can't stand on the outside and beat on the table if we're not trying to get involved and get to know our legislators and talk to them and try to get them to come sit down with us. I've changed the subject, but that's not something I, that's probably the first time that's ever happened. While I agree with the getting staff to give us some recommendations on what we can ask for at the state level, I also want to have staff give us an idea of what we're going to be able to do or not do, because my fear, we all know what the bottom line is, and that is you want people to put their name down as a donor on the packs that are doing it. That's a simple, simple suggestion that you want. But I understand there may be some legal ways that they can contest doing that and have done it. And I don't want to get to the point where we, we get something passed at the state and we start trying to talk about an ordinance here and we get to this and all of a sudden we say, well, we can't do that. Or they're going to be able to not do it because of this or whatever. So I'd like for staff to make sure they provide us the information that what would limit our ability to do that or what would be the ability of those people to challenge that in some way, because I don't want to get down to the very end and all of a sudden we're all throwing up our hands saying, well, why did we go through this whole mess if they're not going to have to report anyway? So. Chief, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I agree that we ought to do that. For one thing in that regard is the DA has said, don't make the penalties criminal. Make them civil penalties. Because the burden of proof in prosecuting a criminal case for the, for ethics violation is beyond a reasonable doubt, and that's, that's a heavy burden to carry. But in the civil case, it's just a preponderance of evidence. So he's asking to take it away from, make it a civil action. I think we ought to look at it that way. And maybe there's a way that we could ask that, that when these things, when they, when they happen, that our clerk could refer them to the district attorney's office as opposed to, or our, I don't know how to do it. It's a sticky wicket and it's, we've never been there before, but I don't want to not do anything and then be sorry that we didn't make some effort to try to move forward. And what you're saying, from my standpoint, Gary, is well taken and I agree with you too, Pat, but I just want to, there is, there is a sense of urgency. We have elections coming up in a year, and I would like to see if there is anything possible we can do to not have a, have an instant replay of what happened.
Pete?
Pete, in regards to Gary's comments, you know, I think we could just adopt the federal election rules and have them apply at the state and local levels and achieve what you're trying to achieve. One thing that you won't be able to do is that 501(c)(4) organizations do not have to disclose who contributes to them. And as long as they don't make independent expenditures their primary activity, keep it below 50% of expenditures, then they fall within the Internal Revenue Service guidelines. So you'll get a lot of what you're wanting to achieve, but that ability of a 501(c)(4) organization to contribute to these campaigns, unless you somehow override the Supreme Court ruling, is always going to be there. But I think you'll, you'll achieve quite a bit if you just, if we can just adopt the federal election rules and have them applicable to the state and local rules, because they have to report anybody contributing more than $200 to a political campaign. Now, can a 501(c)(4) contribute to a political campaign? Yes, and those people who support that 501(c)(4) organization don't have to be disclosed, but at least you're finding out, you know, that second level, not the third level, but the second level of who's contributing. And they always have to report who's making any political ads or expenditures as far as the committee, the political committee.
There were a lot of comments at the ethics commission, and I thought they were very self-serving for the most part about, well, if a, that the reporting requirement would be burdensome, that if you put reporting requirements on people, that will cause fewer people to run for office. I mean, that, to me, that is so disingenuous, it's hard to hold that thought in my head. I mean, the idea, and the, like if the Oklahoma Public Employees Association gave money, then would you have to list the name of all the employees of the Oklahoma Public Employees Association? Well, you wouldn't, but, I mean, it's, it's a ridiculous question, because the Oklahoma Public Employees Association are people that work for the state of Oklahoma. I mean, that's good enough for me. The same is true with the union. I don't expect to list every union member of the United States if a union gives money. We know where that money came from. It came from unions. We know, you don't have to know the name of some guy in, in St. Augustine, Florida that gave it to a pack. I mean, it's the union pack. We understand that. So I think that kind of stuff is disingenuous. OEA, you know, the fact is, if you've made them report who they are, they've got a list of their members, they could just nail it to the back of the disclosure thing and you've got a list if you want to call them. But we, all these little barriers are being thrown in the way, and not by this group, but by others that are trying to find ways to delay disclosure, to avoid disclosure. And Citizens United does not say you can't have disclosure. It says you can't put caps on money, which I personally think is wrong, but that's now the law of the land and I'm not arguing about that. I'm saying, I want their names. I want to know who they are. And so to the extent we can do that, that's what I think we ought to be trying to do, because I think you'll stop some of this goofiness if your name has to be on it.
Pete, I think there's, there's one other, one other mechanism that can be utilized. My personal feeling is it's too late for our next elections, our March 2013 elections to get any kind of meaningful change. I think if we were going to have a repeat, it's probably, I mean, I could be surprised, but I think it's probably too late to have any meaningful barrier. But one option is for the candidates themselves to very proactively say, this is not going to be allowed in this election. I think you're seeing that in Massachusetts in the senate election where the candidates have kind of come together and said, you know, we're not going to tolerate this. Oklahoma City's a big town, but it's not that big a town. If you want to try and come in with half a million dollars into a city council election, there's only so many campaign consultants, there's only so many mail piece printers. We know who, you know, you can find out, the idea that, well, these independent expenditures, hundreds of thousands are being spent and we don't know who they are, I find that disingenuous. So what I would encourage, I'd like to see all the candidates who are running for city council to just come right out and, and say, we're not, we're not okay with this. And march right over to the chamber and tell them, and march right over to the unions and tell them, sit down with the Indian tribes and tell them, this is not okay. And we're not going to have an election like this. And I think if you see the candidates all in unison, lock arms and say, this is not okay, it's not tolerable, if you do it, we're going to call you out, I think that's, that's possibly the deterrent that we need.
What do you want us to do? I mean, do you want us to tell these, tell our, tell everybody not to support us?
No, just support it with disclosure. Don't do it anonymously. Don't come in and with all this negative campaigning and hide and, I mean, just if you, come in, I mean, police and fire, they can participate in elections. Just say who they are.
But that's permitted under the federal law.
What's that?
What they did was permitted under the federal law. They formed a 520(c) organization, is that the right number?
501(c)(4).
Okay. What's 527?
Well, that's, that's under the code, no, for, for political organizations, but this is a tax-exempt one.
But I'm not worried about the tax exemption as much as I am the concept of somebody not identified coming into the city and pouring a immense amount of money. And I'll have to admit, I was a beneficiary of that kind of effort, and I thank the people who contributed to it because I think they did the right thing. But I think I could, I could paint, creating in my mind a scenario where somebody ill-intentioned with lots of money could come in and influence a city election to the detriment of our citizens. And the example that popped into my mind was, what if somebody wanted to build a big casino here? Where millions and millions of dollars are at stake. To spend a million or so in municipal elections to ensure that there was some sympathetic people in the council would not be out of the question. And that's the part that bothered me. I mean, I think what they did was right as far as I'm concerned. But at any rate, I do think there's, there's an opportunity for mischief in this system as it is now. And I think Councilman J D's suggestion is one of those things that sounds good, but it wouldn't work. And I'm afraid that that's, we're going to have to have something more than just the city council candidates saying they don't want this to happen.
It would work if you did it, if you said, I'm not going to accept contributions that are not disclosed.
But Pete, you don't get to accept those or deny those contributions. They're made entirely over, independent from the candidate. They're intended to be independent from the candidate by law.
You could still disclaim it. You could publicly say, any campaign material that you receive from anyone that's not, that's not disclosed, it's not part of my campaign, I don't have anything to do with it and I don't approve of.
Well, try to explain that to a voter whose mailbox is overflowing with mailings, that you didn't send them because your name's on them. It's not as easy as it sounds. Like I say, it sounds really easy.
I agree.
But I don't think it's.
I agree, but we didn't have any effort to try to do it last time.
But Pete, just like Pat said, explain it to that citizen who's gotten their 10th or 15th robo-call and they call you and say, hey, stop doing this. And you go, well, you tell me how and I will, you know.
I can tell you how. I could have told you how if you'd have called me. You go to the newspaper, you go to the newspaper and you say, this is, this is a bad thing.
And you think the newspaper would print that? And you think the newspaper would print that? I'm sorry.
Well, then you spend some of your own money and put it in a campaign, and you mail it out to people.
And then we get another one of those people throwing away because they're sick and tired of seeing Pat Ryan mayors. It sounds so easy, but I think it's much more difficult from a practical standpoint to do it. That's why we need rules.
Just because nobody did it... A hundred percent doesn't mean you don't try.
Well, I agree with you, but I think our efforts would be better spent to try to create a structure whereby this occurs and not leave it up to the individuals.
They're not mutually exclusive. You can do both.
No. I mean, they could be...We have so much resources and so much energy, and I think we ought to devote our energy and resources where we're most likely to have an impact. Otherwise, we spread our energies too thin, and we accomplish nothing. Just a personal standpoint.
Right. And this will be discussed at our next legislative committee meeting as well. Lyric?
Yeah, I'd just like to use that as a point of making a comment. We do have, for our listeners out there, correct me if I'm wrong, a legislative committee, which those of us on the council who have legitimate concerns like this is, come to the legislative committee with information, and the legislative committee decides whether they think that that is a good legislative agenda to go to our lobbyists and to our representatives. And then we bring that report, sitting on that, and Pete, you and I sit on that among others, we bring that report back to the council and say, "We think that this is steps A, B, C, and D should be considered by the legislature." Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so hopefully, as a result of this, we've already talked, Pete and I, that this would be a means for getting those ideas and moving them forward in the correct amount of time. From a personal experience, Francis has been my helper on this. I'm trying to get my political campaign for next year in concert with the new law that was put into effect, became effective in November of last year. And that new law does change some of the reporting requirements, correct me if I'm saying anything wrong, does change the reporting requirements for you and I in reporting our campaign expenditures that are under the limits and are known who we got the money from, and the timing that we have to do that to the state. And it has not been an easy task, just finding out what the state is expecting in that. And it's now for an Attorney General opinion as to where that new law comes into effect. And so there's a lot of nuances in this that have to be looked at as we move forward. And I'm of the opinion we should move forward, but I think we have to be aware of the complexity of the situation. That being said, I'll get off my soapbox for a minute. I'd like to thank the members of the Musgrave-Pennington Neighborhood Association for hosting their meeting last night. They got back to the core issues of what neighborhoods are concerned with. They talked about reinstituting their neighborhood patrol and the need for that. They talked about beautification and the efforts to get all the neighbors involved in the new plantings of flowers and trimming their bushes and getting their grass cut, things that really improve the quality of life for a neighborhood. And then they also had reported some success that they had in going to the police to stop some racing that was going on, having cured it all together. And I guess every neighborhood out there has got problems with speeders, but they were quite pleased that they had gone to the police, they had gotten some selective patrol out there, and had some improvement. So hats off to Musgrave-Pennington. And if you're not in the Neighborhood Association, attend one or form one, because that's the way to get your neighborhood moving in the right direction. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed?
I just want to echo Pete's comments on the Governor's State of the State speech last night. I think some of the things that she did are significant. I mean, some of those were done by executive order. The smoking, the smokehouses, the vehicles, the fitness centers. And I think that she's several years behind our mayor in terms of sounding the alarm, but I think it's fully on her radar that this is an economic tsunami coming at us. She wants to lower the income tax and other things like that. You're just not...This is, besides a public health issue, an economic development issue that is absolutely unsustainable. It's unsustainable for state government. It's unsustainable for our city government. I think that she had to have gotten pushback from the libertarian component, from her own party. So for her to do that, I think speaks to how bad the numbers are that she's seeing. And she's spoken to that. The billions and billions of dollars that would be saved if we just kept these public health epidemics level instead of increasing. It is behaviors...I think it's tobacco, obesity, alcoholism, and chemical dependency that are driving the large increase in healthcare expenditures. And that's going to be true for the city. We have...We spend $70 million on health benefits. That is going to continue to increase. And as that increases, it takes away from us being able to fund, fire, police, all the other things from the general fund. And so I think that, you know, the argument that we shouldn't be a nanny state, that we shouldn't detract...We certainly shouldn't facilitate these behaviors by providing smoke rooms and allowing people to smoke in taxpayer-owned vehicles that then other people have to come in and ride in. So we certainly shouldn't be facilitating things that are going to break our budget. But I think that when behaviors are...I think even libertarians would argue, you want to maximize freedoms, but when someone engages in behaviors that are detrimental and harmful to others, society has a right to deter that behavior. We're going to address a lot of these issues in a comprehensive fashion at a health forum next Thursday. That's in nine days. That's at the Marriott, at the Northwest Expressway, Marriott across from Baptist. That's from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. next Thursday. We have the Health Commissioner, Terry Klein, the head of the City-County Health Department, Gary Cox, County Commissioner Ray Vaughn, who will speak to a lot of the preemption issues on tobacco that we've spoken about, David Blatt, who will talk about the economics of these public health epidemics, Terry White, who is now, has the dual role of DHS, head of DHS temporarily, but also is the head of mental health and substance abuse. And so that'll be a very comprehensive look. There's a health fair from 5:30 to 7:00. There's about 25 different organizations that will have booths that have signed up so far. And then from 7:00 to 9:00 will be the program, and I just encourage everyone to attend that event. Thank you.
Okay. Gary? All right. City manager reports?
Thank you. This morning, we have Michael Byrne, who's the President and General Manager of the Oklahoma City Red Hawks baseball, here to talk to us a little bit. Brian had an event yesterday at, not only at the ballpark, but various stops around Oklahoma City. And I was talking to Mike a little bit yesterday, and he really shocked me when he told me that this spring will be the 15th year at the Bricktown Ballpark. It just seems like it was just yesterday that we opened up that facility. But Brian is here. He's with the Mandalay Company, that is now in their second year of operating the team. And they were here yesterday with a lot of folks from the parent company, the parent team, the Houston Astros. Brian? Or I'm sorry, Michael.
Not the first time that's happened.
Brian is his brother, who works at the Thunder, so I apologize for that.
That's right. There are four Burns boys, and two of us are here in Oklahoma City working in sports. So I've heard that before. But thank you for the opportunity. For a frame of reference, one of the things that I find to be really important is each season and the offseason to have some accountability for what we've done at the ballpark over the course of the year. So we have what I call a stakeholders' report that we've put together, and this is going to have a lot of those materials in there that just kind of gives a recap of what happened in the 2011 timeframe. On the business side, one of the things that we put a big concentration on was, we really ramped up our staff. So when we purchased the team, there was about four people that had a ticket sales focus on staff, and we ramped that up to about 16 people. But we also introduced some elements that make it more affordable for families and businesses to participate with the team. Smaller ticket packages, including like a seven-game plan that we marketed to lots of families in the community. Previously, the opportunity would have been a full 72-game ticket package, which, as a team president, I didn't even go to all 72 games, so it's tough to expect many other people in the community to be able to participate at that level. What that led to was an increase in advanced ticket sales. So the team had eight sellout crowds, up from one the prior year, another seven crowds that were over 7,500. So a pretty significant increase in our group sales as we focused on youth sports. We focused on churches and some of those small businesses that do summer outing, and it resulted in about a 3% increase overall in the attendance at the ballpark. So a great groundwork for what we're doing coming up soon in 2012. Some of the key areas that we focused on in our first year was family entertainment. Our business is really built on the entertainment value. People like baseball, but there's not enough baseball fans to fill a ballpark 72 nights out of the year. We need to make sure that we're providing a great family destination. So we introduced two new mascots. We had an all-star crew that was on the field. Our Director of Entertainment, she scripts everything that goes on, on the field, from the moment we open gates until the last fan leaves at the end of the night. So she had about 120 different skits and bits to choose from to make it fresh every night when someone came out to the ballpark. If you're looking at that photo, the bottom left is actually one of my favorite skits. It's our toddler race. And as much as I talk about things being scripted, that's the one thing that is most unpredictable, when you get three toddlers out there, mom on one side, dad on the other, and try to encourage them to run to the finish line. You might get a child that sits down and cries. You might get a child that runs all the way up to the finish line but won't cross it. That little bit of unpredictability is what makes things fun at the ballpark. We also, we focused on really some key nights that we called our, that we just positioned as our peak nights to increase the experience at the ballpark. So we brought in some national acts as well to do the entertainment on those key nights. Again, bottom left is a group called the Superstars, and they mix athletes with animals and create a character out of that that the fans, young and old, actually really enjoy. To what Mr. Couch referenced, yesterday we had the Houston Astros caravan. We also had the caravan come through last January, which was a great opportunity for us to introduce our new relationship with the parent affiliate. We also had the exhibition game in March, which was really the kickoff to our season, and it gave us a great chance to display what the Astros' commitment to this community, they really sought us out when the opportunity became available to be the parent club here in Oklahoma City. One of the things that became very apparent to us when we got introduced to the community last year and talked to different business leaders and folks in the community was just how important some of the events were at the ballpark. So the Bedlam Series, the Big 12 Championship, those are things that we put a special focus on because they're important to Bricktown, they're important to Oklahoma City, and we wanted to make sure that they ran at a high level. One of the other things we did was we also introduced a high school baseball program. This was an opportunity for local student athletes. They had a fundraising component that gave them a chance through Red Hawks tickets to raise some funds in their local community, but it also gave them a chance to play a game at the ballpark on a non-game day. So we ended up hosting 19 different events, so 34 different high schools in the state of Oklahoma. And we actually had two Texas high schools come here and play a playoff game, and we had a couple universities play as well. So it gave us an opportunity to continue to use the ballpark in a creative fashion that will be a memorable experience for those student athletes. It was also, became abundantly clear just how important all the extra events in Bricktown and at the ballpark were. So we had 16 different nonprofit walks, runs, celebration events like the pancake breakfast, all these types of things that we embraced, wanted to make sure we executed them at the high level, and continued to work with local organizations to be able to experience the ballpark in ways just beyond the Red Hawks 72 baseball games. Onto special events. Between meetings that we host at the ballpark, we have events that we host for our partners. Many of them, bottom left there, you'll see Pepsi. Many of them may host a family summer picnic at the ballpark on a non-game day, snow tubing. All in all, we had, you know, over 175 events beyond just the baseball games at the ballpark. And that includes many sessions, you know, from November through January 1st of the snow tubing. But it gave us a great way to continue to keep people active and engaged with the team and coming through the ballpark, over 30,000 people, for example, with the snow tubing. So it keeps the ballpark active, really as a 12-month venue. One of our other commitments was to our customer service. We wanted to really up the experience for everyone that came out to the ballpark. Last year, we had in March a five-day opportunity where we did our Red Hawks University. It's really, it's modeled after Disney University. So anyone, whether it's a parking attendant, ticket taker, usher, folks that do our customer service, the Oklahoma City police officers that work with us off duty for security, anyone that was involved and experienced with our fans, came out and participated in this Red Hawks University. We wanted to define for them what customer service meant. And one of the things that led to that also was increase in the number of staff members that came out and helped us on a traditional game night. So we were making a great experience from the fans the moment they walked in. And then our staff, from the moment that we opened the gates, we have full-time staff at the gates welcoming our fans and then thanking them at the end of the night. I find that to be a really impactful way to get direct feedback from our fans all along the way. As far as the ballpark goes, many of you that have been out to the ballpark, I'm sure you saw the investment Mandalay made in the digital LED board. We had a 10-foot-tall, 185-foot LED board that we installed in the ballpark. It gives us a great opportunity with some of our partners, but also introduce a lot of those skits and those bits and between innings things that I spoke about earlier. We also took a hard look at the pricing. We lowered a lot of the ticket prices at the ballpark and really put a big emphasis on cleaning the ballpark, making sure the experience there was top-notch. The moment people walk in, they understood that it was a clean, safe, family environment for everyone involved at the ballpark. One of the other fan amenities that we introduced was our game day program, the Playball program. This is something we reprint it every night overnight, so it has a new cover, has updated stats, has information about the team, a feature story, short bios about the players. Baseball's a leisure sport, and so people like the opportunity to kind of catch up during the game. And so it's a neat fan amenity that, early in the season, many people had kind of had those alligator arms, and they weren't, you know, grabbing the play ball as they were walking in. But as they came to understand it was free and it was a neat thing that they wanted to read, they were seeking it out as the games went on. But it's a great program. We do across all of our different teams, and it's a neat fan amenity, I think, will continue to be appreciated over the course of this coming seasons. Then we also, we had some great community support from many of the businesses that you all are familiar with. We really went out and had the opportunity to talk to a number of business leaders in the community, and we talked to them about partnerships. And the partnerships really mean, we have to find a way to impact their employees. We have to work with them if there's any community efforts that they're involved in, help them with driving new business. But all those things get wrapped in together to form some of the partnerships that we had this year. It goes beyond just kind of a sign on the outfield wall. There we go. Some of the things included, you know, driving traffic to introduce folks to new locations or get them involved in their marketing. My clicker there? We also worked with Integris Hospital on a home run for life experience. And this is an example of about, one time a month, we stopped the game down in the third inning, brought out someone that had overcome a significant illness, brought him out to home plate, and explained exactly what went on. We have both teams lined up on the baselines, a great way to kind of celebrate the medical professionals that helped these people recover. And then we had them swing for the fences. So we had the radio guy that's calling the home run, "He goes way back, and it's gone." And then that person got the chance to run around the bases, slapping high fives with all the players. Here you see Officer Perry had a couple of his children with him, so just a neat, special experience that leads to really 8,500 people standing up and cheering them on and really encouraging them. One of the other opportunities we had was with our hometown heroes program. This is something that we wanted to make sure we really put an emphasis, not only on the folks that are serving for our country, but also the families that they leave behind. So we had about 30 dates where we had a family that had a loved one deployed, brought them out to the ballpark, gave them a behind-the-scenes tour of the ballpark, got them down on the field to meet some of the players, gave them Red Hawks gift bag and some Red Hawks cash for food and beverage for that night, and just gave them the experience to really turn it off for one evening. And then in August, we had a celebration event, which you see here. This is the opportunity where we had to recognize some airmen that were recently deployed or coming back from their deployment. We also had a swearing-in ceremony. We had all kinds of things going on throughout the game that gave us the opportunity to really thank and support our service troops in the area. I also included a couple different items in there from the media. These were just kind of what was being said about the team over the course of the season. So this was an example of great customer service experience that Ted wrote about. There's also an article in The Oklahoman that happened early in the season related to some of the improvements and some of the new expectations. So those are types of things that, you know, as we are partners with the city, we want to make sure we're sharing with you what's being said with us in the marketplace. And then one other item that I wanted to touch on, which will be new for 2012, is our focus this year on our concession stands. We have a new partner that'll be our food and beverage partner this year, and so there's going to be a significant investment in the concessions. There's actually lots of construction going on at the ballpark right now. We're going to reface all the concession stands, new equipment. There'll be an increased number of portables on the concourse, so we're going to almost double the point of sale, so it makes it a little more efficient for our fans to get whatever it is they may like. New menu options, really just trying to look to enhance that overall experience, and it's something that I know our staff is very excited about, and the fans will really come to enjoy as they come out to the ballpark, starting on opening day, April 5. And again, just wanted to take one last opportunity to show some appreciation. We really value the partnership with the city. Mr. Couch and Mayor Cornet and Mr. Anderson have been very supportive of us and wanted to... to make sure that we came out at the end of the season and were accountable for what went on in the first year, and kind of give you a little bit of an idea of what we're going to be focusing on in 2012.
It's very exciting, Michael. I'm very impressed with those numbers. They're something you all should be very proud of. Please pass along our congratulations to the team. We're very proud to have Mandalay in town, and I think you've been a great citizen so far. Also, do your programs have scorecards?
They do. They have a scorecard in the center.
I see those disappearing from major league games, and I hate to see that, but we're doing that.
They are right there in the center of the scorecard, and I've even seen people utilizing it, so that's nice.
Do you sell pencils?
No. Maybe we need to. Hang those out at the gates, too.
Pete?
I was there yesterday and enjoyed the, especially enjoyed seeing Milo Hamilton. That was a great, that was kind of a thrill. One of the things you talked about was your involvement with high schools, and I'm personally involved with an effort to try to do good things, synergize the city of Oklahoma City with the difficulties that go on in the inner-city school system, specifically the Oklahoma City public school system. You actually have the colors right there, blue and red. As a Cardinal fan, I mean, the color scheme works just fine for me. But I go to St. Louis two or three times a year, and then usually try to go someplace else and watch them play. One of the things I've been really impressed with is Major League Baseball's involvement in inner-city baseball. Not just high school baseball. High school baseball's alive and well outside of the inner city. But we're missing so many kids that used to be baseball players that don't play baseball at all anymore. And I would really like to see you get with the Oklahoma City public school system, I mean, you look at Carl Albert out in Midwest, a great baseball program, Deer Creek, great baseball program, some of the Edmunds schools, Norman schools. But you look at I-89, they barely are able to pull teams together with student bodies of a couple thousand. They're still not able to pull teams together. And that same thing happens in the inner city St. Louis, it happens in the inner city Philadelphia, and probably happens in the inner city Houston also, because inner-city kids are just not playing baseball anymore. I would really like to see you guys make some effort to try to work with the inner-city kids in the same way you're working with these successful high school programs, like Deer Creek and Carl Albert and those. It's a great opportunity, a great fan base, I think. Inner-city kids are probably more likely to need to come to a ballgame, and that's a great. I went to a few games last year. You've really done a great job on the safety, the family side of it. If there's anything you could do to contact, I noticed the athletic director for the Oklahoma City Public Schools was there yesterday. In fact, I sat at the same table with him. And if you got, if there's any way you could get together with them and see if there's anything you could do with the schools. And it could involve more than just baseball. Obviously, those kids, especially the number of Hispanic players we have now, we have a huge Hispanic population in inner-city schools. I mean, I can't imagine anything much more thrilling for a third or fourth grader to have a, some, one of your players come and be a reading mentor for him or something. I think it's just a really great opportunity for both the ballpark, the city, and the school system. So, the good job you've done, I'd just like to see if you couldn't just make it just a little bit better and see if you could expand.
Certainly. Absolutely. Yeah, there's a couple of projects that we've been looking at this offseason. We've been actually talking to a partner about improving some fields in the area and some of those types of things. So, it is something we take seriously and perhaps we can discuss.
In fact, that's what they've done in St. Louis. I mean, they go into an area that used to play baseball, and they've actually built a baseball field, and they called it Lou Brock Field. And Lou comes in and signs our grass for all the neighborhood kids, and they're starting inner-city baseball again. And in some of the cities, St. Louis being a great baseball town, is probably more likely to work better than some others. But in some of the cities, it's working very well. And it would be worth the effort, even if we eliminate the sports part of it, even if the sports part didn't work, the interaction between your players, young, nice-looking kids, many of them Hispanic, that, it would just be a great opportunity, I think, for both the team and the school.
Pete?
If I could just comment, I think that's a great idea. And I think we could bring in some partners, including the city with respect to the municipal parks, to provide the areas if the schools themselves can't provide for a ballpark. And it's so critical, I think, to get young people, boys and girls, to begin getting involved with baseball, especially in grade school. That's such a challenging sport, and if you wait until high school or later to begin, you're usually probably going to be left out. But the YMCA, the Oklahoma City Parks Department, and other organizations, along with the Red Hawks, could all work together, I think, and really try to build that up. Because when I was growing up and going to Durancho Village, I mean, we, that's all we did was play baseball. So, anyway, I'd love to see it build back up to the way it used to be 40-plus years ago.
Well, the partnership when the old Oklahoma City Indians were here, where they were affiliate of Cleveland, and the Y, the public schools, and the Indians, that was a great partnership. I mean, you could always go to a ballgame, you had these T-shirts for all the little grade-school teams. The Y was a big sponsor of that. But, and you know, society's changed. Baseball doesn't quite work fast enough for a lot of young people. You know, they're into the digital, it's got to happen, it's got to happen now, kind of. But in my view, you miss a great, you miss something really wonderful if you miss baseball. I mean, it's a great sport. It sounds to me like it's the future of Mandalay and organizations like yours to try to get these kids. We're not going to be able to import players forever. We're going to have to start growing some of our own again. And that's a way to, that's a way to do it. I just encourage you to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Gary?
Michael, parent club, are they happy with us? Any comments about them? And didn't they get a new owner recently? And how do you, is that going to impact the Red Hawks at all?
The parent club has been very pleased. We actually worked with them early on last year, right when we became partners, on improving some of the facilities downstairs. Simple stuff, new lighting, some paint, you know, and making sure that the weight equipment was in the right spot, some of those types of things. But you're right, there is a new owner. He was in town yesterday as part of their group that was around town, visiting a local hospital, visiting Tinker, did a couple of events for us. And he's actually very engaged. He was asking a lot of questions on our operation and how we can work together between Houston and Oklahoma City. So, so far, they've been very pleased. On the baseball side, they've been exceptionally pleased. Some of the folks, there's a new general manager, but some of the folks that we interact with on a daily basis are still along with the organization. As far as the player development side, and the facility, and the field itself, they've been very complimentary.
All right. Michael, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Opening day, April 5th.
Against the Memphis Redbirds.
That's all, sir.
All right. We have citizens to be heard. We have two people that have signed up. Bob Kemper?
Sure. Jeff Bezdek, 1015 North Broadway, Suite 120. I serve on your MAPS 3 Transit Subcommittee, Alternatives Analysis Committee. And I just wanted to thank you very much for passing the resolution this morning to move forward with the acquisition of Santa Fe. Our Transit Subcommittee sees this as a very important first step towards developing the streetcar and regional transit system, and we're very grateful. I missed if there wasn't a discussion, but thought it might be a great opportunity to just give you a quick update as to where our Subcommittee currently is. City staff will be, in the next couple months, looking to put out an RFP for a third-party transit consultant to help us with determining what technologies are out there, and what the vehicle might be like for the streetcar system. I have talked to Rick Kane about what they have done with Union Station in terms of rehabilitation. And should we be successful in our acquisition of Santa Fe, I can assure you that the Subcommittee will be very judicious in how the, with the recommendations that go forward, in terms of how the funds are used to rehabilitate that facility. It's a remarkable, extraordinary, historic shape, and if you haven't had a chance to go in there, I'd encourage you to. It's open every morning, and certainly any number of our Subcommittee members would be more than welcome to take you into the facility and show you around when Amtrak is there. And I'm sure that you've heard, we were denied a Tiger III grant, which we'll be reapplying for, and I don't personally consider that to be anything that's discouraging in this latest Tiger III application. Department of Transportation received 848 project applications from 50 states, basically 14, 14 and a half billion dollars' worth of applications, and only 511 were dispensed from the federal government. I don't see that any reason to be dissuaded in the current path that we're on with our local project. Certainly, San Antonio is a great example of a local south plains-type application in which a intermodal facility such as Santa Fe receives several million dollars for both your intermodal facility and their streetcar. So, we will be judicious in our recommendations going forward, and we'll be careful to make recommendations that make the best use of the citizens' tax monies for MAPS. And we'll also make sure that we are not precluding any future federal applications as we move forward. Rick Kane has done an extraordinary job. The staff is on top of things, and, you know, we're moving forward. One other thing, last February, I believe it was, we came forward with the preliminary streetcar route that we made a recommendation that you receive. And at the bottom part of that route was a dashed line, because we are still waiting final confirmation on whether or not we can go under the Reno Sherred and Bridges. And once that, apparently, that looks promising, and assuming that we can go under those bridges, we'll be coming back to you in the next few months with a more solid line depicting how we would connect the convention center, the Central Park, the core to Shore Development, and the front door of Santa Fe into the route that you have already received. But I'd like to thank you again on a personal note. It's a huge day for our Subcommittee, and also the regional aspirations for a great transit system, and hopefully, the acquisition process will be smooth.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh-huh. Bob Kemper?
My name is Bob Kemper, 2600 Ford Dittner Road, Oklahoma City. I'm with Kemper Consulting Group. And to reinforce what Mr. Bezdek was saying, I too appreciate the efforts of the Oklahoma City Council and the mayor has done in the acquisition of the Santa Fe station as the core of our transport, intermodal transportation hub. With this pending acquisition, I want to suggest to the mayor and the council that we look at ways to make this an active, alive center, just as soon as practical. I'd like to see the subway open to Bricktown. We could perhaps have functions such as Bricktown or an Oklahoma City Downtown Business District Visitors Information Center. There could even be maybe a small Starbucks-type coffee shop inside. Amtrak has a program, it's called the Great American Stations Project, and there is federal money for rehabilitation. I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, you're aware of this, and I think we need to avail ourselves to that. But in making it a live center just as soon as possible, and doing the rehab that's necessary, I think we will generate much more public support for the overall project of making Oklahoma City not only a big-league sports center, but also a big-league transportation center. And so, anything that we can do to open this up immediately, and even with station attendancy, we have plenty of volunteers. Amtrak has a program whereby volunteers come in when the trains leave, when they're there to help passengers answer questions. It's a, they go through a training program, it's bonded, and it's worked in many other cities. And I'd very much like to see this happen here in Oklahoma City, and try to find those things that will, that are perhaps transportation-related, that will, again, make it a live and vibrant center from day one.
What are we currently offering Amtrak passengers, as far as information and?
At present, we have John Dougherty from ODOT, who opens up stations in the morning, and he'll answer questions. Most of them are answered on the platform by the conductor of the train. We have a little bookcase that has a bunch of pamphlets stuck in it, and now there's an indoor, not a kiosk, but a ticket vending machine inside. But as far as helping people find the train, get to the train, general questions, we don't have anything at this point.
Okay. So, the station is opened at that point, and then it's closed after the train departs?
Yes. Then it's reopened usually by Amtrak in the evening, when we pull into the station. And I think it'd be a great boon for Oklahoma City to have more of a city involvement with Amtrak, because this is going to be the core of our transportation hub at some point. I wasn't going to mention this, but I will go ahead and mention it. I think, too, that we need to, for the city, to open a dialogue with ODOT and Amtrak on perhaps service for the rest of Oklahoma. We have, Oklahoma City is a center, we have four cities to the south that Amtrak services. There's four cities to the north that we could be servicing. The problem that I've always seen with the Amtrak schedule, and I'm not dissing it in any way, it's just a problem, and I think it's been a problem for Bricktown, I think for the city, is that it takes people away from Oklahoma City in the morning and brings them back late at night. With Edmund, Guthrie, Perry, Ponca City, and perhaps Arkansas City, we could actually bring people in the morning to Oklahoma City and take them back in the evening. So, I think business-wise, it'd be a good thing to look at, and there's no structural reason why this couldn't be done. I think ODOT has planned for it, BNSF is aware of it, and Amtrak is aware of it. And I think a push from Oklahoma City, along with acquiring this great station and using it as a public facility, I think we could make some inroads there and increase our overall traffic.
Thanks very much, Bob.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have executive session. We'll be back.